Everybody get stand for the pledge, please. Side poll to change order. First up, we have a new ceremony.
I'm going to change the lineup a little bit and do introductions first. Well, I'd like to thank the mayor, city council for this opportunity tonight to introduce our new employees and some of our officers that have earned this promotion. It is fitting that these introductions and promotional ceremony worked out this week. This week is, this week, every year, we honor and recognize those in law enforcement that have paid the ultimate price to wear our badge. Everyone has sworn an oath to protect our communities and enforce the laws of Kansas with honor, integrity, and our lives as necessary. Trust me, we do not take this honor lightly. The Pale Police Department does not forget the hundred and forty-seven officers that lost their lives in the line of duty last year. And we thank them and their families for their sacrifice. Now, that being said, we all wear morning badges this week in honor of all the fallen officers. Since seventeen seventy-six, we've lost over twenty-six thousand officers in the line of duty. So we're going to start with introductions and they're going to be based on when we hired them. We have hired quite a few. You will see a lot of new friends in faces. Officer Zachary Jarrett stepped forward. He was hired in September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. He comes to us from the United States Marine Corps and is still hard-fort Marine. It will take him a little while to get back to civilian life. We pretty much hired him the day he got out. And he was a military police officer while he was in. Let me step back. Lieutenant Nate is on. He was hired on January first, January sixteenth of two thousand twenty-five. He comes to us from the private sector, thirteen years prior to law enforcement, and he has been with, this is his second time in the Pale Police Department. Officer Johnson. Officer Johnson was hired March third, two thousand twenty-five. He comes to us from the US Water and Police Department and has ten years of law enforcement experience. Step back. Officer Watson, who's handling the call for service in the lobby as we speak, was hired three twenty-five of twenty-five. He comes to us from the Alata Police Department, Chesapeake Bay Police Department, having three years in law enforcement and served in the United States Navy. Officer Madison Ellsworth. She was hired four fourteen of twenty-five. She comes to us from Alata Police Department. Officer Jillian Wilson. She was hired on five five, twenty-five, my birthday, so we'll never forget that. Comes to us from Prairie Village Police Department. And our newest hire that started yesterday, Officer Morgan Edens, don't even have a uniform for her yet, was hired at five twelve. She comes to us from Anderson County Sheriff's Office and worked in the detention center. So as you can see, we've had a very busy eight months. We've hired a lot of new employees, and I want to thank Captain Jenkins for all his hard work in the new hires. It takes us several weeks to a month for us to get someone hired. This is mainly due to the extensive background that these officers go through to ensure that we get the best officers as you see here before you. Also want to thank all my supervisors and human resources, who's not here tonight, for all their hard work that they contribute to the hiring process, because it is quite a lengthy process. To our officers, I wish our new officers the best of luck moving forward with their training. The amount of work you put in now will make you officers, will make you the officer you want to be tomorrow, and will make the job easier in the long run, trust me. So put in the time now. To let everyone know a little bit about the process of our new officers and where they're going next. Our field training program is fourteen weeks. That's for the officers that are certified or uncertified. If they're uncertified officers, they got an additional fourteen weeks at KLETC or in Hutchinson, Kansas, or Yoderview, as some of us refer to it. So a total of twenty-eight weeks of training before these officers are out on their own. That is a long time. There's a lot of time, money, and commitment by our own staff to get these officers where they need to be so that they're self-sufficient on their own. To the new officers, thank you for choosing the Pale Police Department to begin or continue your career in this noble, rewarding, and stressful profession. To the families of all the officers, thank you for lending them to us for eight, ten, twelve, nineteen hours, however long it lasts, while they're on shift. Your dedication, their dedication means a lot to us, and it does not go unnoticed at the Pale Police Department. I will do my best to make sure that they receive the necessary training and support from the Pale Police Department to be successful. All right, now we're going to shift our focus to our officers that are taking the next step in their careers, our frontline supervisors. These officers are responsible for overseeing and conducting the training for all of our officers within our department, even me. They're also responsible for quality work our officers produce while on shifts. These are your officers that make sure we continue to do a great job for our community. I have a lot of trust in these individuals, and I know they will make me and our community proud. All right, Sergeant O'Thout. Sergeant O'Thout has been with Pale Police Department for approximately five years. Or been in law enforcement for approximately five years, Pale Police Department for four years. Pinning his badge tonight is his wife, Henry. In his sergeant stripes are his mother and father, Dennis Junior and Laura O'Thout. But not least, for sure, is Lieutenant Gazano. Lieutenant Gazano has been a sergeant with us previously and left the city pale in two thousand nineteen to be an SRO for the Shaw Mission School District. Don't hold that against her. Maybe that's her too much. He came back to us in January twenty-five, and pinning his badge and lieutenant badge this evening is his daughter-in-law, daughter Kinley, and wife Jessica. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Thank you to the officers. And good luck.
Enter it there.
Yes.
All right, next we have the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council have any questions or comments on this?
I'll make a motion for the consent agenda as presented, Miss Mayor.
I'll second.
Man, you go. All right, Brown. All right, Shields. All right, motion passed. Thank you. Next, we have comments from the public. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council on anything not on the agenda? Next, we have some unfinished business from last month. The dangerous structure at two oh nine North Pearl that we tabled.
So that's the previous city council meeting. Council voted to table resolution two thousand twenty-five zero zero five, which would deem the structure at two oh nine North Pearl Street dangerous and order it to be demolished or repaired. This was due to the owner of the property stating they were under contract to sell the property, which would close prior to the next city council meeting. Since that meeting, I've spoken to representatives from Sunflower Real Estate, the company in the process of buying the property. Sunflower Real Estate advised they were still in the process of buying the property but could not confirm if the sale had closed yet. What's on your memos a little bit different? There's been a little bit of a change since last week. I drove by the property yesterday. JR, in the last, last meeting, you had asked if the property was going to be completely cleaned up prior to the closing sale. Yesterday, I still saw several items on the property, so that's kind of what my change has been. Staff's recommendation would be that this gets tabled for another month to ensure that that process actually goes through. Uh, we have anything else? Then it's the owner to your speak if you guys have any questions for him.
All right, I'll just make a statement.
Yeah.
Say what's going on.
You might just say the name and then I'll tell that again, just let him know that's good.
Dennis Steele, Ray Steele's here with me, the owner of the property. There was a problem with the title work. Back when my great-grandma passed away and went through probate, they put it in my grandpa, my mom's uncle, and all the my uncles and my mom's name. When they transferred it to my mom, like fifteen years later, only two of them signed, apparently. So now we have deceased and all this that they're going through, but they're gonna, they're bypassing all that and going for this second quiet title, just to clean it up. But they said that would take up to ninety days. So they moved the closing date back to September sixth, but they said it definitely will be as quick as it gets fixed. And it's already in the process, like it's already started. So that's where we're at. So any questions? As far as the stuff still being there, once it got pushed back to June sixth, and then now that they tabled this or gave me the amendment to September sixth, I slowed down and getting the stuff out of there. I was wedding my daughters, and then this last weekend I just took off. I was just sick. So since it was like closing, you know, I did clean up the yard. Everything's in the actual driveway and eighty percent of it's gone. Or I don't know if you've looked at it, but you know, it'll be kept mode. It'll be more clean every week that I get more stuff. The house is pretty empty. I'm taking out like trash and debris that my grandpa had left, you know, twenty, thirty years ago. So upstairs, so. But that's it. That's where it's at.
I just got one, and you may, this may come over to you. It's my understanding now, you said it's your closing, and I've dealt with some of this stuff before, and I understand that, you know, it gets pushed back because the title work done went down correctly. So we're looking at September.
At right, according to the title company, to be safe, they wanted to give us till September. So I still, I didn't want to come back every month and be like, well, you know, so, but it has to go through a court process, and they said that usually sixty to ninety days it would be done. As long as there isn't somebody that's going to say, oh, I still have interest in that from nineteen ninety-four, which is all my aunts and uncles. And none of them would do that, but one of them is a pain, otherwise I would have went and tried to get everybody to sign. My grandpa's passed away, my uncle's passed away, then I have to go to his kids, my uncle's kids down in Texas. It just seemed like I've never met him. Nobody knows where they're at. And it just seemed like it was going to be easier to do this when my aunt's passed away. Same deal, it's just going to be going out to get a lot of notarized signatures, and if any one of them said, no, I don't want to do that, then I'm back to quiet title anyway. So that's where we're headed.
Then the next question would be for staff over there. We're going to table it for another month. Do we want to revisit it every month, or do we want to table it to, if it's possible, then table it till September? And again, it's staff recommendation. If you want to revisit every month, I'm happy with it.
I think that we should. Honestly, I think the cleanest way is to let it die and let staff continue to check in every month, and us bring it back to you. Probably have to start a little bit, bring it back to you when we have a conclusion, because this is going to go on month to month, and I don't want to keep extending this resolution.
In the meantime, is there something I'm sure that you're doing to make sure it's, you know?
Nobody lives there either, not like this.
Keep an eye on stuff.
We can also do not occupy because the danger structure.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's not an immediate hazard as in, you know, going to fall down the next couple of days. So it's, it's, and it's not as close to the road, say, as like the barn that we discussed.
Okay.
But yeah, we will post that, and I'll continue to monitor cleanup and everything on it.
I guess the only question I'd have is for staff is that if we let it die tonight, then the process got to start all back over again. Is that an onus? Or is everything already there for you to get the process going again? Because I still think you got to go through the hearing and the rest of that, so.
We would have to either way if it changed ownership.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's kind of inevitable, honestly. So I would hate to pass this resolution, it changed ownership and have to do the process over again anyway. It kind of makes sense just to let it die, monitor it, and then if it does change hands, do the process over again.
So the recommendation stands firm on, okay?
So we're not doing anything at all with the motion, correct? Okay.
Are you, are you going through a title company on this?
Yes. We did. Well, they changed a different one, because the first one came up with this issue. They thought, well, let's try a different one and see if they look different. But it came up with the same issue. So I don't know if it's local on the second one. But yeah, my uncle did not do that when he signed it over to my mom. Him and my aunt signed it over. I have no idea. I talked to him at Steve Benner over at the Whistle Stop Cafe. He doesn't remember everybody being on or how that worked. So I thought maybe he was the executor of the will or something like that where he could do that. But he doesn't remember, and according to them, they get it listed, everybody's on there. And apparently from ninety-four on, it's had, you know, my grandpa on there who passed away in ninety-four, so like right after they put his name on it, he passed away. So anyway, obviously, we didn't know this was happening, because we would rather have the house gone than it being on, but I mean, it is an old house. And you know, I was thinking, it's another hundred days, but it's been there sixty-one thousand five hundred and some days. If you give it another hundred, somebody will fix it. They will stabilize it. It will be safe. The city will, you know, you're going to work with them to get it fixed, so it's not like it's just going to be sold to them and then sit there. So they want to fix it. They really had contracts without looking at it.
That's always our goal, is that we get it fixed up.
Well, right.
Yeah.
Fix up or tear it down. I get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so all we need to do is stand mute on this today.
Is everybody good?
We'll move on to the next one again. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck with it.
I appreciate it.
All right. All right, new business, the two thousand twenty-four audit. Yep, Harold, your, your time.
We have the audit in front of you. Turn. Pass the table of contents to the independent daughters report. This is our part of the financial statements. You're a gap, not a gap basis statement. You are a statutory basis statement. Because of that, and because you're ahead of public record, we have to actually say that, that you're not in accord to general account and principles, how are you are in accord with the county's municipal accounting guide or statutory basis. Therefore, we say we give you an adverse opinion in relationship to the gap. That we give you an unmodified or clean opinion in accordance with the handsomeness of law and accounting guide. Most of everybody in the state, as far as cities, counties go, there are very few that have a full gap basis statement. Most of them do the statutory basis because it gives them what they need. I.e., how much money do we have left over that we're going to have for the next year? It is kind of convoluted when you throw, start throwing everything in the gap size as to what that number actually looks like. So if that's it, you turn to page, the next page. Our responsibility is to make sure we exercise professional judgment, identify and assess the risk of material statement, obtain an understanding of the internal controls, evaluate the completeness of the accounting principles used by management, and to conclude in our judgment, judgment that there is no issues that keeps the city from continuing on as the city should do. We do have supplemental information. In fact, there's quite a bit of individual information in the back, and we get an opinion on that, which is awesome, unmodified, clean opinion. That it is fairly stated. Along with that, supplemental information is comparative to prior year. And our opinion on that was based upon the two thousand twenty-three audit, and that was a clean, unmodified opinion as well. So if you turn page four and five, actually, four, five. Looking at the entity, the city as a whole, went from twelve million four ninety to twelve million sixty-six. So you went down this last year by four hundred and thirty-five, four hundred and thirty-five. Four hundred and thirty-four. I'm not sure why I can't get four in there. Anyway, Esther Means.
You don't have no numbers on your sheet, so it's hard for me to keep up on what page you're on.
Page, I said, six, seven.
Once you get into the numbers.
Yeah, once you get to the council.
I haven't got that far.
So we've seen a, we've seen a drop of the unencumbered cash balance of, for the city of that amount. And interestingly enough, the business funds or water, sewer, health and sanitation and those actually all went up this year. Let me turn back to page four and five. Your capital projects is actually up, little drop in your equipment replacement. And even the general fund is up four hundred and forty thousand from the year before. The big drop came on your bond issue, which is in your special purpose funds. And the reason for that is that we had the bond issue the year before. We started spending some of that money, and we spent a lot of it this year. So that's why it's going down. There's still quite a bit of cash there, but it's all obligated into contracts and that type of thing. So that's where we're at there. Go skip most of the footnotes except on page eleven, just to look at where your debt's at. We went from eleven million four thirty-five down to ten million three seventy, so you paid off a million and sixty-five thousand. If you look at page twelve, you can see when that ten million three hundred and seventy thousand is going to be paid by year. So you get out five years, and it's a five-year influence to show you how much is, is going to be paid. After that, we turn to page fifteen. This is your footnote on the capers plan. And I bring this up each year only because it's such a big number, and I just want you to know that number really isn't in financial statements. It's only in this footnote, okay? And that number for this last year is that capers for the city is, has a liability of one million seven, one million seven hundred thousand. And for the police department, it's another two million four hundred thousand, huge numbers. But it's always based upon them doing an actuarial value of looking at how long a person's going to be here, when they're going to retire, how long they're going to live, and then present valuing that all back to now. So none of it's ever going to occur in one year. It's not like all of a sudden, boom, you're going to pay two million seven hundred thousand. It's all graduated down, you know, for, for years and years out. So just keep that kind of thing in mind. The main reason for this is they doesn't want to claim liability for the whole thing, which I find interesting, because they're the ones that have money. They're the ones that ask you to pay a certain amount, and they can't seem to do the right thing with that. They come up with a big liability. Turn to page twenty and twenty-one, you're going to see the general fund. And your overall revenues are up four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, you know, from five million six hundred and sixty-one to six million eighty-eight. And most categories are up, the largest one being the tax revenues. They're about three hundred and twenty thousand. On the expenditure side, though, your administration went down. Police went up just slightly. Fire department followed kind of suit of the police department. It went up some, not a great deal. And each one of the other departments kind of went up the same amount. So overall, we ended up almost flattening where you were the year before in terms of revenues. That's on page twenty-six. You end up with four hundred and forty thousand during your expenses with your revenues, and last year it's one hundred and sixty thousand. So general fund is, is still showing some, some goods moderate growth there, I think. After that, we look at page twenty-nine to see the employee benefit. I'm just picking on the bigger funds. If you have any particular one, just let me know. But on this one, the employee benefits, it went up two hundred and twenty-one thousand in terms of revenues compared to the year before. It's sitting at one million four compared to one, almost two million the year before. And the big culprit that took your expenses up was the FIAC employer's contribution, the capers employer's contribution, both because of an increase in salaries and/or an increase in rates. So that's what caused that to go down. So the employment fit actually went down a little bit. After that, several of these funds just really show kind of minor differences from one year to the next. Some of them up, you know, ten thousand or eight hundred dollars to down ten thousand or eight hundred dollars. So really not a whole lot. A significant change there. I do want to talk about page forty. This is where your main federal funding with that. And as you can see, we're down to eighty thousand one bit. So that's going to be kind of a little bit of adjustment over the next year or two, because you had all that money you could use for these special projects and that type of thing, and now it's kind of, it's kind of gone. So you're going to kind of watch that. Next page is that bond issue that I was talking about. We had eight million come in from the bond proceeds. It's been six million the year before. So now we're in the process of spending the rest of the two million seven, one point four million that we were expecting this year. After that, we get to page forty-nine, the silver thirty-five. And actually, turn to page fifty, which is the end. It's showing some good growth again this year, one hundred and seventy-four thousand. You know, sitting at one point one million in that. And if I do the test that you normally look at, which is to look at about three months worth of expenditures, do you have that on hand? You're well above that, because that's two hundred and ninety-two thousand. On water utility, you turn to page fifty-three, same kind of thing. You have four hundred and nineteen thousand that it added to, to your unencumbered cash for this year. And five hundred and seventeen would be about three months for us. So you're not quite twice that, but you're getting close, uh, to being that. On health and sanitation, which is on page fifty-four, it's the only one that's relatively close. It did show some growth this year, about thirty-two thousand, uh, but it's sitting um, at a hundred and twenty-three thousand in, uh, at the end of the year. And if you take that three, three-month average, that's a hundred and fourteen, still above. So you're still good there, but it is a little bit closer than some of the other counties. After that, I really don't have too much, you know, if somebody has some question.
You got questions in there, so can we direct him to, uh, Harold, or we direct him to Stephanie?
Stephanie.
Can do, thank you. I'll be able to answer anything I can. It's just like again, and, you know.
But if you do have questions later, you can give, uh, my phone numbers on that, uh, first page, pass the table of contents, and you can call and make a chat about it then.
I think we're getting close to paying some bonds off on them.
Well, you're still sitting at ten million. So I guess that's what you call it.
Thank you, Harold.
I do want you to know that there is a letter that comes along with that. So basically, it's just telling you that, uh, in the process, we do look to see where management has to make its most or biggest estimates in this, in the budget process, uh, as you're well aware, if you go through that process. We did not have any difficulties in, uh, doing the audit, we did have some, uh, adjustments we made, and I would like to go over this shortly. So it's this sheet here, it's a page back, uh, it says one and two. The majority of these adjustments are it's already included in expense, these, these, that's our all I'm doing is increasing cash and increasing tax payable. And the reason for that is because at year end, they hadn't actually been paid. We, we hold books open for like what we call thirteen month, in which some of those are put back. So while they're doing that, they have to decrease cash, and they have obviously decreased the payables. But the expenditures are pretty much the same. So all I'm really doing is an entry, just to show the state that there is other funds on hand, but they're obligated. Okay, and the reason for making that comment is that I didn't want you to think we're having to make a lot of adjustments that are something that they should have caught, it's not, it's more a case of just, we're putting it in a different queue than they did at the end of the year. Uh, cuz they reduced cash and they reduced payables, and we have to kind of put those back. So that, uh, if you look at your bankrupt situation, I've had you, you can see that, yeah, that money, money was there, we also had to obligate so much of it. Doesn't change expenditures.
Do you have any questions for Harold?
Actually, I'll just, I do, I mean, it looks really good, but I just, I take it home.
Thank you, Harold.
Okay, well, thank you guys, appreciate it.
All right, do we have a motion to accept or deny the twenty twenty-four audit report?
Yeah, I make a motion to accept the twenty twenty-four. By Harold Myers and Alder and.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hey, hi. AI.
Thank you. All right. Consider approving resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero one-one, waiving certain provisions of the G A A P.
Yes, this would, um, this would require us to put dollar amounts towards our water lines and streets and all that stuff, so we waive it way better. We still have done it every year.
You have a motion on that one?
Move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero one-one, waiving the performance to certain provisions of generally accepted accounting principles.
I'll second that motion, Ms. Mayor.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Maybe I missed it somewhere, we usually do a motion to
A letter of engagement.
A letter of engagement.
I don't have it yet, but I, I will, yeah, I'm sure I'll be getting one, so.
I started to panic.
No, we've done it at a later date, I looked back. So it, it has happened, we've got it later, so I'll, I'll bring it when I get the letter.
All right.
See how you're gonna react to the.
Yeah, yeah. I think he's been doing our, for at least as long as I've been here. I don't know how long, a long time, he does a good job.
Sure, way after statehood, I believe he's.
Personnel policy changes, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one-two.
This was my mess up, Jessica did present this to, um, the council at work study. Uh, we did part one, two, and three, I left out part three. So that is, all this is, is cleaning up that to add it to our, um, policy, this is the shared lead policy that should be in the employee manual.
If there aren't any questions on that, does anybody wanna make a motion?
I move to approve resolution number two oh two-five dash oh one-two, amending the personnel manual effective May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I second the motion.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right, Mr. House, thank you. Memorandum of understanding with the Paila Recreation Commission for City Facility Usage. This is something that they can work on for a little bit.
So following suit with making mistakes, I really apologize. Um, there's two. Two hours park, so you should have, so you should have the community center one on your table with you.
Yes.
It is no different than what I have explained at work study, but we'll go over briefly. Um, so the first one, Wallace Park, can you get my? Um, there's no fees in here because those are all determined in our city code of user, uh, facility. So we don't have that, this is mainly just saying who is responsible for maintaining what. So that is what the Wallace Park is, uh, for. I will say our departments are very excited about this because it's always been kind of a, uh, this year it's new, this year it's new, and it's gonna be fine lines, we'll know. Especially if there's any turnover moving forward, who is responsible for what. Um, the Firehouse Gym, this is new, and I did work with, uh, Chief Andy Martin on this as well, so he's well aware. It's very short, uh, the gist of it is, um, historically, we've given the gym for free for youth sports. And then we would charge for any adult or any classes such as that. Um, in lieu of charging for classes, we are, uh, accepting a lump sum of two thousand five hundred dollars. That is half of the gas utility for the gym for a year. So that's all that we would require, and that we would allow them to use the gym for, um, the uses listed, youth sports, youth camps, adult sports, special events, community events, fitness classes, and recreational and enrichment programs. Um, as well as, you know, the pickleball, that's in there currently that we don't turn toward. But this is just kind of putting it down, uh, like I said, to allow them to use a wider range and not to have to come to us every single time. Especially, um, per basis, per, per use, so. And then lastly, we have the community center one, which is the one that we just handed out, sorry about that, um. But as I stated previously, it's the same thing, requiring of insurance, is there requires them to fill out a, uh, authorization agreement for use that we already have, that everyone at Rins Facility fills out. Um, but the fees, we have a fifty percent cut per day for the fees, so they're all reduced by fifty percent is what we have. So that is honestly all that one. Uh, and I did work with Brooks, the community center director on that one as well.
It's good to have this on, in writing.
Yes, yes. Well, we've had a very good working relationship with them, but we're both on the understanding of he might not be here forever, I might not be forever, let's just go ahead and get it in writing so everyone knows. But pretty much what we're doing is kind of really what it is, so.
Um, I had a question on, um, the Julie Silver soft, softball field.
Okay.
Uh, they're, the P R C is responsible for the care and maintenance of the Blue Concession. No, wait a minute, I want a different one, um, that's something else, uh, the Julie Silver Softball Field, um. Are they maintaining the fields, the P R C, do they maintain the Julie Silver Fields?
They don't right now, but after this agreement, they will.
Who, okay. Who has done it previously, family members or something?
Oh, well, it's been under the city, but we don't do a whole lot of, we're not pros at dragging fields, I'm gonna tell you that. Typically, it'd be, um, so we would mow the outfield. When it came to the infield, it would be, it used to be a group, big group of volunteers. Or whatever, um, league would be using them, would be doing that. But now that it's, we have a centralized rec, they do it.
Okay, so then this, the one, the number, the H, P R C is responsible for the care and maintenance of the Blue Concession Stand Building, dugouts on the two artificial turf fields. And the scoreboard, um. Are they using that concession stand?
Yes.
They used it last year.
Um, they had, uh, trailers pulled in for the concession stands, but they use it for, um, storage and ice machines and things like that.
And are they using the restrooms?
Yes, ma'am.
The ones that are there or?
They use the ones that are there.
Okay.
Yep, in both buildings, the ones, um, right by the turf fields and also the ones by Julie Silver as well.
Okay.
We actually repainted and redid that refinishes and those, so, yeah.
And they put, they put, uh, hardened seats, boards on the, uh, bleachers, didn't they? It looked like they had
I'm not sure.
On the, on this, it used to be the American Legion Field, I don't know what it is.
Oh, big muscle, well, um, that was not utilized very much at all, um, and we don't really maintain it right now, so I'm not sure if they did or not.
It looks like some, they put boards on there.
All right.
Okay.
That's great.
Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
And I see that it's effective for a year, but automatically renews. As long as everything is going.
So recs can't get into agreements longer than ten years, and since we're trying it out, we decided we'll do one year. If no one in writing wants to modify it, it is renewed.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, any other questions or comments about it? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Ms. Mayor, I'll make a motion to authorize city manager Shannon to execute an M O U between the city of Paila and the Paila Recreation Commission for the usage of Wallace Park facilities, Firehouse Gym, and then the Paila Community Center.
I'll second that motion.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
Mr. House, thank you. This is, that's just one of those things that the rec commission was such a topic for so long, and it's nice to see you.
Yes.
Things being organized and things going on and.
It's been worked on this, I think, since, uh, Wes has been hired, so it's been exciting to get everything going.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, next, the amendment for the twenty-three dash C U P dash zero two for Heron Outdoors.
So at its April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of an amendment to twenty-three dash C U P dash zero two, requested by Legacy Properties Development L C. The original C U P was granted in May of two, twenty twenty-three for the use of light industry in the downtown zoning district. The tenant, Heron Outdoors, produces packages and distributes a line of beer key supplements. These are shipped to distributors and fulfillment centers with no retail sales at the local location. In the last two years, Heron Outdoors has prospered in this space and has now grown in the allotted area listed on the original C U P. Condition number one of the C U P limits the usage of the building to the ground floor only. The applicant is requesting the amended condition to include the basement, as well as the adjoining space at one twenty South Silver Street. The adjoining building at one twenty South Silver Street also is also located on the same parcel as the current permitted space. This request is due to the need for additional space for the growing business, as well as the storage area for future growth. The applicant estimates the additional space will be enough for two to three years of business growth. At which time the tenant would seek a, a larger facility for business. The applicant and tenant have complied with all the conditions since the current C U P was issued. And staff has not received any complaints on the property or usage. Notifications were made as outlined in K S A twelve, seven fifty-seven, and staff received one inquiry from the Miami County Planning Department. Miami County Planning inquired about the amendment and advised that we're happy to see a business in Paila thriving. Staff recommends approval of ordinance thirty-two, thirty-one, amending twenty-three C U P O two for, with the following conditions. Number one, which would be the one that is replaced, is limit the use of the ground and basement floors of the building at one eighteen South Silver Street and the entire building at one twenty South Silver. Rest would stay the same, there is follows, limit loading and truck access. Silver Street cannot be blocked at any time. Miami and Gold can be partially blocked for maneuvering to the alley between Via and Miami. Anytime in which a street is to be partially blocked, the business owner must provide traffic control. Prohibit delivery vehicles from projecting into the street or blocking the site triangles at intersections. Limit times of delivery to established hours of operation. Control rodents by using an integrated pest management approach. That includes environmental san- sanitation, proper product storage, rodent proofing, trapping, and poisoning. No exterior storage is allowed. At any time, the city may institute a certification of a conditional use permit for violations of the conditions of approval expiration. For the reasons specified in section twenty-one, two twenty-five of the L D O. The city shall provide notice to the landowner and public in the same manner as it was provided to the establishment of the conditional use. And the owner of the property. That can probably was just here, if you guys have any questions for him.
Get in the back. Who would sit in the back?
We all know, that's your spot. Did I have any questions for Rob?
I was inquiring, what are the, uh, hours of operation with respect to delivery times? Just ensure if nobody's gonna be woken up or disturbed with like vehicles backing up or anything like that, it's not that early, is it?
So the.
Okay, yeah, there is, no problem with that.
It's good, it's thriving.
Great to hear.
And Amy's carrying the torch. Yeah.
I'm excited to have an empty building downtown.
Yes, for sure.
Uh, I do, is there any intention for any signage on the exterior, anything like that? Okay.
Anything else?
I have a thing, Ms. Mayor.
Not, is there a motion?
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance three-two-three-one, amending twenty-three conditional use permit dash zero two as proposed.
I'll second.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
I didn't even ask if you wanted to say anything.
I think if we do both buildings on the state and national historic listing.
Yeah. Yeah, that's exciting, that's very exciting, thank you, Rob.
Yes, sir, please, I was gonna text you today, fourth.
Thank you. I feel like there's three of them. I don't know how he does everything he does.
I don't see how it keeps.
Yeah.
I don't see how he does all he does.
Yeah.
But I got, he has huge talent, he gets to do, redoing a building.
Yes.
Huge talent.
It uses a lot of local people, which is always nice. All right, request for reduced permit fees.
So my father's house has begun the permitting process for the tiny home development at Ten O Four North Pearl Street. Permit fees for the site development portion of this project are based on overall construction valuation of the permitted work. Building permit fees for the site development total five thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars, ninety-five cents. My father's house has requested the city council waive or allow a reduction of the building permit fees for the site development of this project. My father's house has paid all plan reviews to date, so no plan reviews have been added to the building permit fee. Ever born engineering will perform and or coordinate all inspections related to the site development. Ever born engineering will perform and or coordinate all inspections related to the site development. And will provide staff with engineer reports of the completion of the project. Staff's recommendation is approval of a fifty percent reduction of building permit fees. Which would, would remain consistent with section four dash three oh two of the city code. And keep it the same as any other taxing entities or anything like that.
Any, any questions on that?
I have no questions.
If none, is there a motion?
Uh, I'll move to allow staff to reduce building permit fees. Building permit fee, uh, for the site development at one double oh four North Pearl Street by fifty percent, Ms. Mayor.
McMahon?
Hi.
Hugo?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Shields?
Hi.
Alright, motion passed.
Uh, Tyler Technologies, E R P Pro upgrade, we should talk about all of them.
Yes, that discussed, we have, um, found out that our fund balance software has been end of life in twenty twenty-six. So we would like to just move forward with doing that upgrade. Um, I was able to find the money in the twenty twenty-five budget for the fifty-one thousand nine eighty. Then we'll get to get that going, so once we have a signed contract, we can get on the calendar.
And then after that, annual twenty-one five thirty-eight.
Yes, and she did include a list of where all that money was taken out of.
It's nice to be able to find it in the year we're in.
Especially when all the departments use the software, so you can split it up.
Yes.
It's nice.
Any, any questions or comments on that one?
What, what would be the timeline of implementation on this? Have a, a rough one?
They, it was hard to get that figured out because they have several of their customers are finding that they need to upgrade, so. Um, they thought maybe they could start, if we, right now, sign the contract in October, they can start doing it. But they, they couldn't give me a time span of how long ago live date. They, they did say if it continued past the end live date, which I don't think it's going to, they would continue to, um, support the software we currently have. Knowing that we're moving, so hopefully it doesn't take a year, but.
Yeah.
You wouldn't think so.
Any other questions on that one? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve the software as a soft service agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated and authorize the necessary signatures.
I second the motion.
McMahon?
Hi.
Hugo?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Shields?
Hi.
Right, most of us, thank you. Five hundred block of Ishani rebuild.
I am Brett today. So, um, as we discussed, he did bring the street improvement plan to everyone and it was approved. And we were not for sure if we were gonna get the federal exchange fund, and we did, so we had a little extra left over. Um, and this was a block, and you can see the pictures, five hundred block of Ishani, where it is, uh, the curb is completely, it's destroyed. It's pretty awful and it's a brick street, which unfortunately is kind of past the point of maintenance at this point, it needs to be rebuilt. So he's proposing to rebuild that block. Let's see here, he got Kilo Construction to do the bid because they got our street improvement plan and were able to, um, kind of lower it due to the mobilization since they're still in town. So, um, he's proposing going with Kilo Construction for eighty thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty cents. Um, let's see here, the Kilo Construction will also haul off the old, uh, bricks for us. Um, now, if someone is sentimental, wanna break, we still have tons of piles out of public works if they wanna break. So we didn't want anymore, they're gonna take it for us and haul them off. So, um, let's see here, I believe that is all I have, if there's any questions?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a little annoying on this one, I'm not gonna lie. Um, was there any consideration for the removal of the brick, redoing the base and then replacing the brick?
Will be twice the cost.
Twice the cost?
Yes.
Is there any, any factors for lifespan cost? Cause a properly built brick street could theoretically last eighty to a hundred years. So the replacement cost for, uh, asphalt street lifespan is usually what, thirty years?
Yeah, yeah, you might know about that, every seven, ten years on it.
So, the, the long-term implications with the rebuild of a brick street on top of, you know, safety advantages, considering it's kind of a tertiary street, I feel like we don't wanna induce speeding on a smooth asphalt surface, block order for the school. Uh, people, you know, it's, it's more ideological and, and a brick street when you're driving on it. It makes people a little more uncomfortable, so they drive slower. I, I think those are considerations that we should have with respect to its location as well as, uh, brick surface has, has a little bit of a mitigation effect for stormwater, considering it's on a hill. I, I think that could be considered as well. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that. You might be the expert on, on whether or not it's even viable, but I figured I'd raise some of those ideas and.
You know, uh, is it a viable alternative, yes. It, it, it most definitely is, there's some aesthetic, uh, uh, benefits to it, yeah. I mean, you gotta store, you know, street and, and, and you, and you get a brick for it. Do I think at the council and, and staff need, uh, when we start looking at this, take a deeper dive into it? Really, really do, because the way it boils itself down to is that you'll put the curb in, just like a regular one. And the only difference you'll do on this, it gets to be labor cost, is you can go down there and put a sand surface down, but typically what they do, they'll put concrete down. And then they put a little sand on it and then those bricks will be, be on it, but the, the dog, the, the double the cost will be in, in their label cost when it's all said and done. There's absolutely not, this, I mean, redoing brick streets done in certain jurisdictions. I'm not real sure that, you know, with their short timeframe, people that I would look at this, I mean, Anthony, I'd look at this one. I definitely look at it in, 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 in the future.
Okay.
Some, but, uh, it's really good food, food for thought. But it's, it's labor cost is what it is. Now aesthetically, yeah, you're, you are one hundred percent right, aesthetically, and then the drainage does make a difference. You don't have, your, your, your surface will porous. And it gets it, anyway, I don't wanna get, talk for an hour about it, so.
I'd like to say that probably twenty-five years ago, the, um, city manager at that time wanted to save all the brick streets in Paola and, uh, they did save some and, um, the city council even voted that the certain streets that were brick would not be replaced, they had to be remained brick. And of course you get new sitting, people on the city coun- council and new city manager and all that, and they don't know any of that. So, uh, but I do, I do know that some, there are people that love the brick streets in Paola and, and, uh, they feel like I do when they, when they're covered up. It's, uh, a shame, and I have, I have been up and down this street. And the bricks, the brick street itself is not bad, except for this one area. The, the curbs and guttering needs to be replaced. But we have replaced curbs and gutters in other parts of the town and just did the curbs and not the whole street. And I was wondering why we just couldn't replace the whole curb and gutter uh, on the whole side of the street. And then this one low spot where the bricks are, there's some water there, that's really the only bad spot in the brick. And that could be raised up and the bricks replaced, it wouldn't take that much. I, I'd love to see that happen, but knowing the past that I, as I do, it probably won't happen, but I, I, I think there's a lot of people that like our park square and they like our brick streets and, uh.
Oh, yeah, I mean, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna disagree with it. Um, the application definitely has merits, has huge merits when it's all said and done. I'm not real sure that we wanna tackle it on this one, and the reason I'm saying that is, is we got a, uh, Kukaski over there. And Kukaski runs, what, six, seven blocks of bricks? So I think if we're really gonna look at one, and again, I don't wanna take anything though through your area, through your, your award, uh, Anthony, but I think at the end of the day, I would definitely look at that one, uh, what you did say, and, and I've seen it done before. You pull the bricks off, you pour your curb, again, other than the bricks, the constructability of this is pretty similar to every, everything you do. It is just be labor cost, and you pour that, that curb down, then you try to match, you know. But like I said, right now, it kinda goes like this.
It's not bad.
And you're trying to match straight.
It's a little bit.
I, I, I've seen it done.
Yeah.
Uh, but aesthetically, but.
It just depends on how you, if you wanna preserve history.
Well, I, I, I think when it's all said and done, we, which, uh, council does have a tremendous opportunity in, uh, the next two meetings to maybe stress this, you know, hey, we can, we start doing the bricks. I just think probably this one is just a little too late, and that's my own personal opinion, and I'm the only one, it's not mine in my word.
So it's, uh, was any consideration made to state level grants? I know some of the grants that exist for infrastructure, you can qualify a brick street for that.
Um, okay, I know, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna. Everyone's gonna bring up, did you get grants?
I.
So, um, I'm gonna tell you, we extensively will get grants. Unfortunately, those have been cut a lot, and they are hard to get, especially for our, uh, demographic of our city. Especially for the size of our city, and unfortunately, we do a good job of keeping our city well-maintained. So, um, we are, don't qualify for a lot of those.
Okay.
Um, now, we do get grants, obviously we got the Dan Grant. The Dan Grant. The Grant Cora, like my old name, but like I said, it was almost rehabable without it. So unfortunately, when we keep up our good streets, we don't really qualify for a lot of those. And it's a double edged sword. I will say, when we speak to, towards the brick, staff is operating, kind of what J R led to, under the impression that we are here to put in the most cost-effective option. That's how we have been going for probably the last two, ten years, and so that is why we brought this. If there's a priority that is, want to bring up next meeting as we talk, talk through budget, I, we are more than happy to explore that in, for the next budget session, but I think J R is, uh, hit the nail on the head with, we are too far gone, this street is too far gone, if we want to put it um, delay this to look at next year, uh, we will have absolute no curve and we'll be able to plow it. So I think that the more immediate need is to get it fixed, to make it walkable, to make it drivable. And then next year, we can look at preserving probably the longer blocks of brick, if that is what we wanna look into. That would be more cost-effective in the long run.
Good conversation.
I'm glad somebody stopped the way I did.
You know.
No sense in erasing character, we have to, I, I would argue.
Go ahead, I, I didn't, I said I could, this, I'm a trouble all day about it.
You said they haul off, look, I, I know we have big piles, but is there any harm in adding some more? Considering you can replace damaged ones throughout the city is just basic maintenance life of brick streets?
I honestly think that you're undermining the amount of bricks we have. We are in no shortage of bricks.
Well, I mean, that depends on the context. Like, if, if we, if we start moving towards an idea of, say, of downtown master plan in the future where we wanna bring back brick, what looks like a big pile now could be next to nothing after, you know, we pursue some of those ideas, so.
Sure, but I'm sure that we can find places, we can buy them just as cheap as we're getting rid of them. It, it would, it costs us to get rid of them, I don't think anyone is understanding that, like, yes, there are piles of brick.
Have you ever tried to sell those bricks?
Yes, ma'am, we have, that's why we have piles of them.
And they're sturdier than new bricks.
Yeah.
And if you wanna see a demonstration, now to seven oh two east, we are.
There you go.
And look at the end of the sidewalk.
I think what we're getting at is, if Kilo's gonna come in, they're gonna bring a ball cat in, they're gonna pick those bricks up and put them in dock truck. And they, and the way the contract probably looking and reading is those bricks become their property and then they have the ability to, uh, do whatever, what they want to, this, in the city, and this is not unusual. I think what we're asking a little bit is, is that we got a pile this big. Okay, instead of taking those bricks, moving them somewhere else, if they put those bricks in that same area, is there enough room to put those in there? Or guess what, I don't, I don't wanna use my whole, I really don't need ninety percent of my yard having bricks in it, so. That's probably only, but if, again, I've been down there and I haven't seen the pile of bricks, I don't know what it looks like.
Yes, Brett, our public friend recommended for Kilo to take that.
Well, I'd like, I think at the end of the day, probably this one here, and is, uh, I, well, I'd defer to, it's in your district, I'd defer to you to make the motion, but, uh.
What?
Is this in your district? My district cuts off at Maple, doesn't it?
No, it's mine.
Your district, I was thinking it was.
But, uh, I, I think it's good conversation, cause like you said, when we come on, we start putting together our, uh, priorities and stuff that we wanna do, and there's a cost of it, and there's a cost to that. Now that being said, there, there's a life cycle benefit to it. And I think bricks are sort of cool in areas in town, I really do.
I, I, I just, I bet I want to account for lifetime expenditure, mill and overlay, that's thirty years redo, the asphalt taking.
Yeah.
And the life cycle.
Well, this, this, this has probably been around for, probably pushing a hundred years right now, it's got, I mean, just look at the style of the curb and stuff, so. This game is almost worth.
Alright, maybe have any more questions? Comments?
I gotta marry it up, but I'll, okay.
There a motion?
I move to approve the proposal bid from Kilo Construction totaling eight thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty cents.
I'll second that motion.
McMahon?
Hi.
Hugo?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Shields?
I think I'll be con- concur and say no.
Oh, I can, I can.
I mean, I will, but I think it's good to try to come to some sort of a majority decision, just because of conversation and, you know, that kind of thing. No, I don't like conflict.
Well, and, and it's nice that we got new items coming in and stuff like that, because lots of times you did, you know, you ended up, this, you used to do it. And they used to do it, and then, so.
Good, 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 good conversation.
Of course, I mean, my generation's grown up, eighty percent of us in the suburbs where everything's a six lane street and a strip mall, so, we like there.
Me too.
Plus I walked my kid today, and the only streets that were comfortable to walk near were brick streets, because they weren't nine thousand degrees.
Yeah. But again, like we talked about, these are good things to talk about, as we look forward. And, cause staff is at our, they're under our direction, so they're only doing what they've been asked to do, so.
I would like to say something, nobody, I would like to say something. I would like to, when the city to start encouraging landowners to, uh, clean their sidewalks up that have, were brick and they've overgrown with weeds and a lot of places you don't even know they're there. And I, I do know a couple of, uh, families who have moved in from out of town and they loved, they wanted the brick sidewalks and they cleaned them off and it looks, it's just wonderful. And, um, uh, I think probably some homeowners don't even know the brick side or sidewalks are underneath. And I'd like to encourage all homeowners to clean their sidewalks off.
One of the ways to find them is when you're pretty in the water.
Oh.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
I was, I was cleaning my neighbor's brick sidewalks with the potty knife at night, when I'd get off work sometimes.
Alright. We have a lot of character here, and it's good to preserve what we can, when it makes sense.
Precisely.
Alright, staff reports? You have any more talking to do?
Yeah, I will.
Alright.
Um, so talk about software, we have finally gone live with our new software, it was started in twenty twenty-three. Um, and so the guys, there's a lot of bugs, a lot of issues, our I T company and our software company are continuing to work with us. Um, Miami County, Lewisburg, and Oslo, we need to get all the bugs worked out. But the, the big thing is, is that it's a lot less work now for our officers uh, to be able to use the system even at its current capacity. Um, it's a huge relief, you know, on them and on staff, because we know how much extra work they had to do in order to, to get their jobs completed, so. So, definitely excited that this is finally. Um, we have the new patrol car, we have three of the new patrol cars in, we have one on the line in service. Um, it has the, uh, front push bumper on the front of it. Um, is how you'll know the difference between the, the new and the old. Um, hopefully we'll have another one up online this week. Um, so we're looking forward to that. We still got one in the wind that supposedly any day it'll show up.
I'll be driving it.
And then obviously, you know, we've got a whole lot of training that we're gonna continue to do. Um, it's definitely gonna be a training, two years uh for the PD, so. Definitely look forward to seeing everybody learn. That's all I got.
I don't normally shoot from the hip during meetings, but um so. We have a very cool tool here with this simulator that I don't know if anybody has seen in this room. And what did you say, a simulator? So sometime in the future, because I got to see it when it was brand new and it was a very cool. And it was a good, it gave me a good perspective, so.
Like it's a, yes, nowadays it's considered old school and outdated, um but it still still works, we still use it. Um, and it. It will can can definitely apply stress to you and make you think and react, and and it's a great tool that we have. That most agencies do not have.
Do you still have others coming to train on it here?
We do, not as often as um as we'd like. The big issue is, is most agencies are busy doing their own trainings and stuff. But uh we've actually had the Fort Scott Community College come out and use it a couple of times for their their programs, so. Yes.
Down the road, I think it would be good for them to see.
Absolutely, set that up and run everybody through it and.
You have an unfair advantage. Anything else? Okay. Mitch?
We are to two hundred and one permits for the year, so right on track to be the same, if not more permits than last year. Uh. We've got a Walmart remodel. It's getting ready to start. The original protect projected start date was May eighteenth. Um. I'll wait for his payment for the permit now, so got all the logistical issues done, so that'll be cool to get to see a new Walmart. Uh. And new house moved to eleven twenty-four East Peoria Street. Uh Patton's moved it in from outside of town, so we got another another rooftop in town. Contractor's gonna be remodeling it and sure it'll be up for sale.
And what what was the address on that?
Eleven twenty-four East Peoria. Yeah, Sunflower Apartments, that little.
Yeah. That's Cascasia, isn't it?
Yeah, on east of Hospital there.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, Randy said it's still up on Still Talk, they've said it on the foundation, yeah, so pretty cool sight to see. Um, we won't have planning commission next week. We don't have any agenda items. Thinking maybe next month we might have a design review. Hopefully, conditionally used permit, got lots of things in the works. Uh, just waiting on fall through or follow through. Uh, and the first round of grass letters was sent out last week, so get in grassy.
Yes.
We could have a moment contractor this year, so about trying to just sleep. That's all good.
What's the extent of the Walmart remodel?
It's a lot of just kind of moving things around. There there's a new store layout that they kind of have been going with with. All the Walmarts, ours is actually one of the last ones in the area to get updated. Um, it's it's more or less just moving a lot of departments around. Uh, they originally, the original plan was to have an addition of to the building uh for pickup over on the east side. But they've since scrapped that idea. Uh, so yeah, it's kind of just a base lift on everything.
They're having a chamber coffee tomorrow night if you want to go.
I'm sure, yeah.
They're gonna present everything apparently, so.
Do you know if they're doing any street state or exterior improvements facility?
Not from the looks of it, um little little things here, but not a major overhaul, you know, so.
Can we can we nudge them for that in the future at all? I like trees, man.
I would, I would love for them to. Unfortunately, their uh corporate side doesn't like, yeah, doesn't like listening, um. Stuff like that, yeah, but new builds, absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're established.
Yeah.
Well.
Oh.
I'm sure that's a hard job whenever you have to answer the questions on the move everything. So.
Yeah.
It'll be nice.
Just in talking to some of the door employees, it's it's already been chaotic.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
It'll be an adjustment.
I don't know if you'd be the one to direct this to, but uh there's, I've noticed on a few of the alleyways, there's quite a few potholes from the firework that was done.
Hmm, but but I can forward it to them.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, yeah.
I I don't know if if we need to bring them back for any of those.
They're still working.
Okay, yeah.
It's gonna be the next few months, they're gonna.
Are they like around the vaults themselves or just?
Some of them, is some of them where they kind of trench. For a lot of like wherever they started.
Yeah, I know uh Comcast as a whole went through a week or two ago. So they did a kind of a whole assessment of everything.
Okay.
So they're gonna be still working.
Gotcha.
And we do have a performance bond with one of the uh contractors and a maintenance bond for two or four years after that, so.
Okay.
We can still pull them back for a long time.
Gotcha.
I will mention that to Brett.
So that, Mitch?
That's it.
All right, Randy. All right, well, good thing we had that great discussion, because we are going to move um priorities to July, so Anthony can be part of it. But in June, we're still gonna go over the non-mill funds for budgets, so come prepared, we're gonna go line by line as we always do, so. But priorities, keep thinking of it, we're gonna table it till July. And then tomorrow from four to six is the one fifteen west via site inspection for the public, so if you're bored, want to come over. Rob, George, Mitch, and I'll be there.
What time is it?
Four to six.
Where is it?
One fifteen west, we in?
Oh, okay. Have you guys, has anybody had any interest that you know of?
Nothing aware.
Not that you're aware? Maybe they're all way, they all they match to ourselves.
Yes, it is, yes, and she actually is gonna pay the rest of her brick cost share, so. She called a major arrangements for that one to get sold, so. Uh, and that's why.
Stephanie?
Nothing.
All right, Jared, you have anything?
Uh, just a few things. Good, good conversation today, council members. I mean, I really, really was. It's refreshing to have this. It really is. Uh, a couple kudos, uh. The uh, I went over your budget pretty tight the other day, and I've talked to Stephanie about it. Today, and and the budget's going well. It's, I mean, our revenues are coming in and city staff's doing a great job of. Of making sure that we're at our budget numbers or below them, so I was extremely pleased uh when I went through that. Uh. Again, uh, we uh, we talked about the dam and I thought the dam uh was uh come along pretty good when it's all said and done. Uh, two things, and they're gonna dov- dovetail in today, is that. You know, anytime, and I think we got some like in our quarter cent sales tax that we can use in the future. Anytime, and I'll go back a little bit, I was in another town. And uh I walked, I have new tires put on, I shouldn't have taken my life in my hands to walk across the street. Out this town to have some for for lunch, okay, it just shouldn't be that way. And I thought to myself, we really need to have, we really has, and one of the things in my business. I wish we would have done more for walkable communities, because my my business was concentrated on just having cars. And pedestrians, we, we don't care, we we just watch on there. Another thing that kind of hit me the other day is there was a bridge in Charleston that was replaced after you 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 gave, or came you go. And they spent the extra money and they put a large walkway on on one side of it. And that walkway was just as busy, and it was really kind of a gathering place for people to walk from one side of the bay to the other. And so any time that I see walkable communities and I see that, uh I am really, really impressed with it. So I think that, you know, uh table what uh Commissioner Hugo said today. And uh, Commission, I mean, not Commissioner, uh Mo County Day's Councilman Shields did. That uh, you know, that we probably do a little bit deep, deep, deeper dive into this, especially on the sidewalks of it, when at the end of it. Anytime you can make a community walkable, naturally, it it it'll slow down your your traffic a little bit. Another thing that's up in the paper, Miss Mary, was is that we've lost our public, we have, we have a chance to lose our our public transportation. And again, dovetails back into, we've got a car centric society here. It's difficult to walk anywhere. And all of our businesses are moving out there towards the highway when it's all said and done, so I don't know what. If anything, uh that council or anybody can do with it, but I think if we just keep it on our radar. At a little bit, because like I said, we got it underserved, uh uh populace out there. Some of them being my relation, that just, well, thank God that they got me to drive them back and forth, but uh. You know, if they didn't have that, it would be very, very difficult then for them to do their shopping over there and stuff like that. But like I said, with the car centric society that we have, so uh that that that's all I had. I'll jump off my soapbox and turn it over to Councilman Hugo.
Um, my, I just have some athletes for staff, the uh. Was it the northeast corner Miami and Fourth Street there? I saw that they were uh pouring some concrete around that that curb and that storm sewer. It looks way better than the hole that was there beforehand. So definitely good, good seeing that, you know, improvements even kind of the edges of town. Uh, the trees in the square that were added look fantastic, as well as the uh mulch at the playground in Wallace Park. My daughter was over the moon that she could actually reach the stairs to the playstay now. So it's it's good to see. Um, definitely, I agree with JR on on the walkability. That's that's one that I could. I can go on all day. I mean, my wife and I specifically moved to where we did, because we could walk to restaurants, coffee shops and. City Hall and post office, library, and I think that's a pretty intrinsic and important part of the community, especially remaining competitive going forward. You know, kind of attracting younger generation, people who want to. Put it, you know, put a stake in the community, be a part of it. I think we should, we should pivot focus towards that. That's it?
Okay.
Well, since they brought it up, uh our or the ordinance in Paola says that. Every street should have a sidewalk on one side or the other. And uh, in watching kids leave. School in the afternoon, there are some streets that do not have sidewalks and they're walking in the middle of the street. So, and this in our ha- uh half cent sales tax, it specifies. Fixing sidewalks and streets, so I think we need to remember that. And then I have one question. When somebody comes in and wants to put a fence up in their yard. Are they told that uh the ugly side of the fence is to go to go towards the house? Because there's been some new fences put up.
We don't, we don't have any zoning regulations specifying that.
There was.
Some places do that, but we don't regulate that.
Okay, glad to know that. I thought that it specified somewhere that. The ugly side of the fence was supposed, is supposed to go towards the house.
It's that's bad material, but not which side it has to face.
The ugly side.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, um I just have a few things. First, we have some reappointments and appointments, which is good. I find people to volunteer for anything. Um, so first, we'll consider the reappointment of Alan Hare to the Pala Convention Tourism Committee.
I'll make a motion to reappoint uh Alan Hare to the Pala Convention Tourism Committee.
Give me a second, that motion.
McMahon?
Hi.
Hugo?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Shields?
Hi.
Thank you. Um, consider the appointment of Laura Rosell to the Pala Convention Tourism Committee. So Laura's gonna be a new addition. Um, Michelle Kaiser, her term was up and she's stepped off because she's. Busy and not, she doesn't have a business on the square anymore. Laura owns Fire Lake So Breathe. So she's always at all the events and always excited about things going on in town, so I thought she'd be a good fit to this committee. So I could get a motion for her.
I make a motion to appoint Laura Rosell to the Pala Convention and Tourism Committee.
I'll send them there.
McMahon?
Hi.
Hugo?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Shields?
Hi.
All right, and then consider the reappointment of Ramona Willig and Beth Lawson to the Pala Library Board.
Move to reappoint Ramon Willig and Beth Lawson to the Pala Library Board.
I second the motion.
McMahon?
Hi.
Hugo?
Bye.
Brown?
Bye.
Shields?
Hi.
All right, still have a couple vacancies, but we're getting there. Um, so good points tonight. Everybody remember, keep those in your mind when we're going toward July. Because what we were gonna talk about in the, we're talking about in July, so you can be there for all the kind of budget cap thing and. Um, priorities.
Okay.
Um, so make sure you keep that in the front of your mind for July.
I have something.
You know, you're not gonna be there in July? At the work session?
Maybe? Move the work session.
Is, are you gonna be on the work session?
No, that's not on the day I leave.
Okay. I'll get with you on it when you're gonna be here, and we might just do a special meeting on a different night, if everyone's okay with that.
Yeah, you guys go with that. Otherwise, it may, it's budget sensitive, so.
Yeah.
I'll do this, we may go and we'll figure out.
Yeah, that sounds good. We're very bad at that one.
Yeah.
All right, and since you said something earlier, happy birthday tomorrow to JR.
Seven, no, sixty-seven.
And that's all I have. I can get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
McMahon?
Hi.
Hugo?
Hi.
Brown?
Bye.
Shields?
Hi.